Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Saleh and Fuad Sharivah, the master of ceremony for this session. And good morning, excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special session on business and investment opportunities in Sarawak. My name is Lester Mathew and I'm the director of Economy Unit, the moderator for this session. So as mentioned by our emcee, we have five distinguished speakers with us this morning and they are going to talk about the business and investment opportunity in tourism, digital economy, manufacturing, and oil and gas sectors in Sarawak. And for your information, our session will be divided into two parts. We begin with the presentation by the speakers, they are given 10 minutes each, and the second part will be the question and answer. Without further ado, now it's a great pleasure to introduce our first speaker, Mr. Desmond Douglas Jerukan. He is the Deputy Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Tourism, Creative Industry and Performing Art, Sarawak. He will be talking about business and investment opportunity in tourism sector. And without further ado, please welcome Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Yambagia Nato Lester, our moderator this morning, my friend, and my fellow panel of speakers, Tansri Datuk, and my fellow coworkers whom I recognize, and all the guests who are here this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, today I feel honored to be among the selected panel speakers focusing on tourism, one of the six economic sectors as to sustain our current high-income status. I'm glad to see that so many guests came during the gala dinner that night and I can assure you that during the performance done by the Sarawak Arts Council, they were able to see the richness in colors and unity that makes up Sarawak. And then if you can see the slide, I'll just give you a brief overview on my topic today. As tourism, as you can see there, tourism is just one of the six economic sectors that I'll be focusing on this morning. And I'll be talking about the progress and the performance so far after the pandemic. And what is very interesting here is this document, which is the Post-COVID Development Strategy 2023, was formulated by our right honourable Prime Premier of Sarawak. And also what's very interesting here is also that the documents and the contents of the PCDS 2020 is very closely aligned with the STG goals of the United Nations. Way by the United Nations mantra with regards to S J G 2030 is "Leave no one behind", and our PCDS 2030 mantra is "Leave no Sarawakians behind", so they coexist in harmony. Ladies and gentlemen, the COVID-19 pandemic did not spare anyone when it destroyed the economies around the world. Sarawak's tourism industry was also not spared. However, we should focus on what lies ahead and not what happened two years back. So as reference point, just to see where we are in 2023, I'll be using the 2019 figure to assess and evaluate where is Sarawak in terms of its recovery compared to the UN World Travel Organization's chart at the moment. As you can see, in the last two years, we can see a rise with regards to the number of visitors coming to Sarawak, starting from 2022, rising from below 1 million in 2021. It was 2.02, 2.027 million arrivals. And actually, our ministry had targeted for this year. We were not very ambitious, we wanted to target 3 million visitors, but that target was surpassed last October, whereby we recorded 3.187 million, eight-five-six of visitors. Thereby, our minister has so decided that, alright, this seems something that we can work on and then that Sarawak is on the right road and on the right path to recovery. So that he decided during his winding-up speech at the Dewan Unanggengi and the State Assembly that in 2024, Sarawak's target for visitor survival or tourist arrivals will be 4 million and with an estimated tourism receive of RM 9.76 million. So that is quite a very high target that's been set. Because if you look at the next slide, with regards to tourism investment that we get from the Malaysian Investment Development Authority, the two-years figures does not seem very promising with regards to the service sector in Sarawak. It's on the uprise for the other sectors, but the tourism is actually under the service sector. And of the 136 projects in 2022, we only got one project. And also in 2023, we only got one project also. So thus, this means that the investors with regards to the tourism, those who are mainly focused on tourism are still cautious. And then Sarawak is trying its very best to attract more people. But like I said, the ministry is not pushing the panic button just yet because Sarawak is improving its position according to the arrival, the statistics of arrival just now. Therefore, we have to work very, very hard in enhancing our competitive edge. Thus, in developing Sarawak tourism, the Sarawak government has embarked aggressively to highlight Sarawak's visibility and the Sarawak advantage. In the recent China International Fair for Trade and Services, a few months back, 2015, the Sarawak government embarked to have its own pavilion in a shoulder-to-shoulder with the other countries. So this is one of our strategy whereby we will not be going along with the Malaysian pavilion anymore. Sarawak will have its own pavilion in most of the major trade fairs right now. So that is one of our strategy. The other one is to leverage on the existing regional cooperation network that is known as BIMYAGA, that has been in existence for more than 20-plus years, comprising of Brunei, Indonesia, and Philippines. Whereby, recently, during in Brunei, we have come up with some action plans with regards to focusing investment in these areas. So the action plan has been approved with regards to the action plans that is to be implemented after COVID. So the government is also aggressive with regards to improving the connectivity, especially air connectivity in Sarawak. Recently, it purchased Maswing Airlines. So as you can see, we are trying our very best trying to improve the image and more or less the competitiveness of the state of Sarawak. So the government will do whatever is necessary to assure the potential visitors that the investment will give good returns. Among them are plans for world-class hotels, resorts, golf courses, theme parks, and recreational parks, which are actually part of the special tourist investment zone that has been set up. Two years ago, as part of the federal government's initiative to give some highlight to certain special zones in the various states in Malaysia. And for Sarawak, we have actually several zones that has been identified. One is actually known as the Damai Peninsula, which has actually, if you are able to visit the booth that is under the Sarawak Economic Development Corporation. So they are able to show you, I just go direct to the slides, on what comprises in the invest Damai, alright? And then for the new projects that are coming in, that is in the R M K or the Rancangan Malaysia Kadoblas, we have a few significant projects that actually will be a game changer with regards to the number of tourism activities, convention activities, and exhibition activities. We are planning for the next or the new B C C K two that is able to accommodate 10,000 people, which is expected to be complete in 2026. We have the Bau Gold Mine Museum that is about to kick off also in Bau. And the R M recently announced 65 million Ringgit Gastronomy Center, which is going to be at the new, the swimming pool at the City Council of the South. So this is expected to be some of the few projects that has already been identified and to be expected to be the game changer with regards to attracting tourism and raising the tourism profile of Sarawak. So thus, Sarawak will benefit much and actually we have been collaborating and we are working together with Sarawak-based companies. Okay, I'm going to go to my last two slides, don't worry. So recently, there was a memorandum of understanding signing ceremony with the Sunway Group in October 2023 during our High Performance Team Retreat. So these are examples of Sarawak's endeavor in order to put Sarawak's visibility amongst those potential investors who will come into Sarawak, right? So I think the next one, before I hand over this mic to our professor Jakut Singh, actually, our ministry is also on track and I hope he will be able to share with us later on about our digital economy strategy whereby on the ministry's part, we have actually the Sarawak Travel Portal that has already been launched. And actually, it was launched in 2020, 2020, but during that time, the COVID struck. Thereby, we were able to enhance it and thereby we will be able to utilize its functionality for the upcoming Visit Malaysia year soon. Thereby, we also introduce the Malaysia My Second Home System as part of our effort with regards to adhere to the digital economy and digitalization of the work functions in the ministry, right? Thus, in conclude, I would like to end this Sarawak More to Discover with an invitation to all of you. Come, help our tourism industry. There is always something for everyone in the Sarawak tourism sector. There's always a story to tell, always memories to treasure from the Laksan Udel's that the late Anthony Boden discovered and he so much enjoyed, to the visit by the His Highness Prince Charles, who is now King of England, when he met his good friend Anurangutan at the Semunggo Walai Farm. So what is your story? Come invest in Sarawak and discover more for yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Desmond. A very good presentation about the potential that we have in the tourism sectors. And I believe, as we mentioned, there are a lot to discover, more to discover, and I believe potential is there, especially in the culture, adventure, and nature. And now we are going into business events. And the next speaker, a very interesting speaker, is Professor Jakut Singh. He is the Chief Scientist and Chief Advisor for Digital Economy Sarawak and he will be presenting on the investment and business opportunity in the digital economy. Without further ado, please welcome Professor Jak.
Thank you, Datul Lester, and my colleagues, distinguished guests. What I'm going to talk about is digital economy. And you must have heard from our premier the other day that the new blueprint was launched last month. And I'll give a brief of what this blueprint is about and where the investment opportunities are. You must have all seen this and I'll just quickly go through a bit of animation here and show you what this blueprint is all about. And those of you who are interested getting a copy of this, it's cover, it's active cover, the QR code, you can just scan it and you'll get the whole document, which is about 200-plus pages at no cost. And this is a gift to you all. So why this particular blueprint, right? I think that's a very important question that you have to answer. And you all have heard about Post-COVID Development Strategy 2030. So this particular blueprint, what it does, it's a key enabler, key contributor to that particular document. It increases productivity, the efficiency, and also lowers the cost. It will generate high-quality jobs. But more important is that what we're trying to do, and you must have heard if we had a premier speech yesterday, is that we're trying to tap percentage of the global GDP flowing to Sarawak. And I'll show you what we want to do and how we're going to do it. Accelerate investments, and I think that's why we all have gathered here today, and also improve the business model so that our companies and the investors can do business globally. And finally, what we want to do is to accelerate ease of doing business. I mean, my colleague later want to talk about investments and it's very important when you're talking about business that we have to make sure that companies are able to do business with us and foster inclusive society as well. So if I look at the trend, what is happening in 2016, the global GDP was, digital economy contributed about 11.5% to the global GDP, which was about 11 trillion dollars. But the forecast is that by 2025, it will contribute about 24.3, more like 25% to the global GDP. And if I look at the figures that was the size of the global GDP, that will be of 23 trillion dollars. Based on that the global GDP was going to be 96 trillion dollars by 2025, but last year, the GDP had already reached 104 trillion dollars, so it will be more like 30 trillion dollars. So the idea is to tap percentage of this particular value, percentage of this 23 or 30 trillion into Sarawak. And this scale-up is not because of ICT, it's because of the frontier technologies like AI, like blockchain, like 5G, like cloud computing. And this was the opportunities for investment is there. And the question that I ask is that, are we ready? Are the policies in place? Are our digital readiness there? Only then we can capitalize on the value. When I look at the data, the data growth in our region was about 40% and it has already reached 400 extra byte per month. And if you look at the growth is about 40% in our region, now that gives us an opportunity for investment, especially in the data centers. And what that will create is another challenge across border data flow. Why US is so rich? Because most of the data from all over the world resides up there and they pay taxes there and the US becomes very rich. So the idea is to, if you bring data centers in our part of the world, we can start getting data flowing in our region and then this money. And if I look at the frontier technologies that I was talking about, that is going to contribute about 3.2 trillion by 2025. But that creates another challenge is job displacement and also creating new jobs. We have to make sure that our people are reskilled and upskilled and there's another investment opportunity. Now moving forward, what we did, we looked at our blueprint that was 2018, 2022, and we sort of strategized on that. One thing we did when we did the 2018 blueprint was that it was more of digitizing Sarawak. Now, this new blueprint is being part of the global economy. So it's not, no longer Sarawak, we are trying to be part of the global economy. We also recognize that government plays the enabling role, is the private sector that should drive the economy. So that's where the partnership and investments become very important. So our vision is to be a leading digital economy society by 2030. And the mission is basically to make sure that it's an inclusive society, the foundations are built, right foundations are built, in particular, the human capital and infrastructure and technology adoption. We have to foster the business development, there is investment and partnerships, capitalize on digital technologies and also make sure that we are able to provide a secure, simple, and trusted service to the people. See, this blueprint is built on five pillars. The first pillar is focusing on economic growth priorities. And my colleague earlier just mentioned about PCDS and all the pillars. So those are the pillars that we're looking to, like agriculture, manufacturing, services, tourism, and so on and so forth. But the important one is growing our business, digital business. In particular, investment, trade, startups, and spin-ins. The third pillar is transforming our public service, that is improving our ease of doing business. And fourth one is adapting frontier technologies. Again, there's huge opportunity investment up there. And finally, building our foundations, which is your infrastructure, data governance, cybersecurity, digital talent, skills, and inclusivity. The blueprint basically looks like as shown on the screen, those five pillars. What we are trying to achieve is create about 40,000 new jobs, high-value jobs, 50% improvement in the investment, about 20 to 25% contribution to the GDP, and 100% services online. We can only achieve this, as I said, if we are digitally ready. And some of the things that we have to make sure that we address is our infrastructure. In particular, our connectivity, data centers, supercomputing, and international connectivity through submarine cables. Technology adoption like 5G, like AI, you know, like blockchain, like cloud computing, those are very important. Human capital, I think, no matter what technology we have got, unless we've got the people who are trained and skilled, then I think we won't be able to maximize the digital value. Ease of doing business, as I think I have mentioned. And the investment, which is very important, getting FDRs and DDRs going place. And probably, I think you all know that Sarawak government has established Invest Sarawak and the CEO is up here, we'll talk about it. And that is the role of that agency to make sure that we bring investments in here. This particular blueprint is very heavily based on investment and partnership. Innovation and startup ecosystem, I think that is also very important because our economy is driven by data innovation and data governance. Cybersecurity, I think that is always an afterthought. And if I look at the data, cybersecurity in 2021, cybercrime was 6 trillion dollars. And if I look at the GDP of Asian countries, it was only 3.35 trillion. So it is double the GDP, the cybercrime is double that of the GDP of Asian countries. And it's always an afterthought, so we have to do something about it. And of course, the basic infrastructure. I'll just quickly go through some of the investments. If you look at about 15 years back, bulk of the investment was in oil and gas. Now it has shifted to technology, about 70% of the investment globally is in technology area. And of that, about 70% is in US and 25% in our region. But because of the global issues, geopolitical issues and conflicts, it is shifting to our region. And if I look at the Asian region, we got about 6.6 and 62 million population with 70% internet access rate. That gives us a huge opportunity to bring in investment in our part of the world because it's a very neutral country. Opportunities are especially in digital, are in digital services, technology, infrastructure, and talent. We've got the key drivers, we've got a very stable government, very progressive government. And at the same time, we've got the right policies and regulations and my colleague will later talk about the policies and regulations that is going to make it easier. Cyber security, domestic data centers, international connectivity, and availability of skilled people. Another very important area is our energy, we have got green energy. And if you look at E S G requirements, then I think that addresses that. And as I said, Invest Sarawak is the one-stop center and the focus is looking to ICT investments. And also, we are setting up digital industries that will focus that. Especially data centers, if I look at that, as I said, data is currency. If I can data flowing into Sarawak, there's money flowing into Sarawak. And that's the model that we're creating, so we want more data centers coming in here. And one of the advantages of having data centers up here is that our energy is green energy, so we meet the E S G compliance requirements. 5G, we have got about 60% of Sarawak on air now, on 5G. But what we need is use cases and this again, the use opportunities are there. So what I will see or hope to see is investment in intelligent transport systems, critical services, infrastructure, especially remote services, and so on and so forth. So there's huge opportunities in 5G. Digital health is another big area, it's growing. If I look at the data, in 2022, about 206 billion dollars was invested in digital health and is growing. So the opportunities are in telemedicine, mobile health, remote health. So I think this is not going to be done by the government alone. That's where the public-partners become very important, investments become very important. And semiconductor industry, this is another big one. I think we all have heard because of the geopolitical issues and conflicts, you know, the whole world is shortage of microchips, the ICs. And it is going to be about a trillion-dollar industry by 2030. And the major growth is in automotive area, the communication PCs and so on and so forth. And what Sarawak has done, they have spun up a company, which is SMD, and looking to that. But there's a huge opportunity in microchip design up here, which is a high-end industry that I'm hoping that investments will come to this area. And finally, AI, I think we all know about generative AI and the application is everywhere. We don't get into these technologies like this, then I think we'll be left behind. So I'm looking for investment partnership in these areas. And finally, if you are interested in the blueprint, you can scan the QR code and it is a gift to you as from Sarawak government, thank you.
Thank you, Professor Jak. I like the way that you say that Sarawak is now ready for the digital transformation because we have the right ecosystem. And as mentioned by the premier yesterday, it took centuries for people to adapt agriculture revolution and decade to adapt industrial revolution. It take years and only years, two or three years to adapt to the AI revolution. So we have no time to lose, we have to act now. And for that, it's a great pleasure to invite our next speaker, Mr. Timothy Ong, the Chief Executive Officer of Invest Sarawak, to talk about the opportunity in the manufacturing sector. Please welcome Mr. Timothy.
Thank you, thank you, Datuk, distinguished guests. I think Invest Sarawak, just a disclaimer on this, this is not the final color for Invest Sarawak because this is something that I have not gotten the board approval for. So, but it's just something that I'm using for this presentation. Over the past two days, you are hearing a lot about Invest Sarawak in terms of, you know, a one-stop shop, one-stop center. I think you have a lot of things like Invest Pinang, Invest Salango. But I think what Sarawak is trying to do is really trying to make it a real one-stop center. What it means is for all investors coming in to Sarawak, Invest Sarawak will be the first point of contact. I will go through some of the functions and services. Bear in mind that although the area that I'm supposed to talk about is manufacturing, of course, our parent ministry is handling manufacturing, but I will try to introduce a little bit on Invest Sarawak because it's so new. Invest Sarawak started only in August 2023. So it's around three months since I started. But we are an investment promotion, industry development, and international trade agency under the purview of the Ministry of International Trade, Industry, and Investment Sarawak, in short, Mintrade. So for those that understand the federal system quite well, you would probably be hearing a lot on MIDA, a lot on Ma Trade and MDEC. And we are all the three combined and it's just exclusively for Sarawak, that's the only difference, okay? And if you look at investment promotion, although it's taking the lead in terms of the orientation in that whole sentence structure, the industry development portion is one that is critical. We believe that, you know, the economic complexities and the supply chain transformation for Sarawak will be key in terms of landing new investments in the future or if not, the best possible investments that we are looking for, especially when it comes to high-quality investments. We had two of our esteemed speakers talking about, you know, the various components, the initiatives that the government is doing. I'm not going to talk about the high-quality investments and all that. Look at the last line, the final three words or four is about private sector to flourish, right? So building the right climate ecosystem so that private sector can flourish. So I think this is a, not just a whole of government approach. I, I think you can see that consistency across. We have been talking about PCDS, we have been talking about the blueprint. But what's more important is that the private sector, we are inviting the private sector to be part of the journey. And I think they should be the major drivers for these initiatives. So I can be wrong, but I, I believe, you know, that is, you know, my peers will probably be repeating the same. But then what, what is it that we are trying to achieve, right? Connectivity to the global marketplace. I think Sarawak is poised to be in that position. I, I will explain a little bit why. I think we need a vibrant local economy, all right? And, and that's why we talked about the complexities, the supply chain transformation, we're talking about ESG, we're talking about digitization. These are all components to help build a very strong MSMEs, I would say, right? To, to really then help us, them being the strongest attraction for the major multinationals and, and companies of such caliber. And of course, we have strong economic and investment policies. I'll share a little bit on that. High-tech and knowledge-intensive industries which drive new employment and productive partnerships. So you, you see that innovation, you see that then in the mission as well, is really around a common theme of partnerships. I think we, we cannot do it alone. I think that's very clear for any country for that matter. I think it's a collective effort that we are looking at. So please, for those that would be interested to look at this, please do not hesitate to contact Invest Sarawak or any of our colleagues here. Okay, consistency, right? You, you looked at PCDS, you, you looked at the blueprint. Well, we will be having a Sarawak investment policy going forward. We expecting to complete that the end of twenty twenty-four. This is a piece of work commissioned by MinTred, which looks specifically in all the different sectors that Sarawak will prioritize in order to achieve PCDS twenty thirty. So if, if you realize a common, common way of looking at things in, in Sarawak is everybody is building towards PCDS twenty thirty. So there's no variation in that sense, right? It's, it's just around, the methods may change, priorities for ministry may change, but the, the end goal of it will be PCDS twenty thirty. Our function and services, of course, your typical IPAs, advisory services. So I, I would encourage companies that are trying to develop projects in Sarawak to, to really engage with us early. I believe it's a co-development process, you know, you shouldn't only be coming to the government towards the end and especially towards the end where you want to just have, you know, certain incentive structures in place. We should be part of that process to help you accelerate, right? I think the word here is acceleration. Now, of course, we do facilitate in terms of laying out the kinds of incentive packages that will be applicable for your projects and businesses. We also do then provide information on investments, market intelligence, especially with regards to the local scene here in Sarawak. We were told that project evaluation is also part of what we do, especially on strategic projects. And I think that what was very obvious during the board meeting, which just concluded fifteenth of November, two weeks ago, I guess, the approval process. Okay, this is something which is new to us as well. This was raised by the, the Right Honourable Premier, that the approvals should also be streamlined as well as streamlined and accelerated through the board of Invest Sarawak. So I will explain also why this is the case. I'm not going to speak. So this is just a layout of the board for Invest Sarawak. So obviously, the premier is the chair of the agency, but then you also do have the deputy premier being the deputy chair and of course, two of other members. I know it's quite a handful when it comes to the number of board members. But what, what that, the intention of having such a heavy board is that it can actually become a one-stop center when it comes to investments. We can quickly react to the international market, international investors in terms of whether it's preliminary approvals or final approvals and things of that nature. So the internal workings of government should be left within government. So we, we try, this is all in the context of the ease of doing business. So the consistency in terms of the messaging matrix is the same. This is also something that was approved at the board level. We are proposing a new industry advisory panel to support the function of the board and this has been approved. We are hoping to have the members of this committee or the advisory panel before the end of next year. And the reason why we are having this is because we need partners to help in terms of insights as well as recommendations on how we could actually do this together. So if you look at the component of why industry players are there, they are both people that are providing certain director, directions, but also at the same time, your prospective investors, right? Because the right investment climate is not just around incentive packages, grants for that matter. I was afraid that I would hear that bell, but yes, fine. FDI ecosystem strategy, its common digitization is well in the center. Partnership, again, I have to reiterate, human capital development, the connectivity, the infrastructure, diversification of economy, the financial ecosystem, I don't think that's largely touched, sustainable SMEs. So all these are really the blocks and components and how we intend to grow Sarawak going forward. I, I will skip this because it's, so the goals and targets basically, again, PCDS, ease of doing business, prof, I actually included the ICT thing in there, so you know, the forty billion cumulative high-quality and diversified investments, especially on the ICT part. Then of course, the increase in share of services sector, right? Currently, we, we will intend, we, we still intend under PCDS to keep at least thirty percent manufacturing and that's going to happen. But FDI, DDI, right? We will need to have that balance as well. So it's not just around foreign direct investments. We are also working closely with local investors to try to grow their businesses and, and look at new investment opportunities. So with that, thank you. At least I don't hear the second bell, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timothy, you are on, on track. And this is a good news to the investors because now we have our own Invest Sarawak, the one-stop agency for investment in Sarawak. And I believe with Invest Sarawak around the ease of doing business, we very much improve in Sarawak. And our fourth speaker, a very important man here, because he's going to talk about investment opportunity in agricultural sector. And this has been mentioned in the keynote address by the speakers in our gallery about food security. And here we are, we have Dr. Gluma, they're representing the opportunities in Sarawak under the agriculture sector. Without further ado, please welcome Dr. Gluma.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lester. Very good morning. Welcome. On a personal note, I would like to welcome each and every one to Sarawak, the land of home deals as well as the land of plenty, yeah? My fellow panel speakers, representing the Ministry of Food Industry, Commodity and Regional Development, I would like to share some insight into the opportunities in the agriculture as a whole, as well as the food industry. All right, so I hope you have been enjoying Sarawak food and delicacies, yeah, right? Because talking about agriculture, we cannot run away from made food, yeah? And if you want to know more about Sarawak food, welcome you to explore our street in Kuching. There's a lot of plenty of food, as what I've been told by Mr. Desmond LeRone, all right? So without further ado, let me begin with the first slide. Now, the Sarawak Ministry of Food Industry, Commodity and Regional Development has been trusted to come up with the policies, especially to achieve the Sarawak aspiration to become the net food exporter by twenty thirty. So our mission is basically to transform as well as to sustain the agriculture sector as a whole, as well as the rural economy. Because most of the, most of the farmers are usually resided in the rural areas. So we are also taking care of the people and the, the economy of the people in the rural areas. This is done through the modernization and as well, as well as the commercialization programs and activities, okay? So from there, our policy direction is to drive the agriculture sector through technology. And that is why Professor Kaleron have mentioned a lot of the digital initiative. So in our case, is to drive it through the digital agriculture and to make it as sustainable as possible, which will ensure food security because this is one of the hottest issues that are being talked about, all right, today, and not only in Sarawak, in Malaysia, but also all over the world, okay? And then to establish, as I said, to make Sarawak as the net food exporter by twenty thirty, which is based on a three pillars, which is stated in our post-COVID development strategy twenty thirty, all right? Okay, let me just confine my sharing to this slide because when we talk about agriculture, there's a lot to talk about, actually, yeah? So as we all know, agriculture is a very diverse industry, which make up of several sub-sectors. Talking about crops, crops, we have commodity crop and food crop, then we have fisheries, we have livestock, we have agro-process industries and all of this. So let me just confine to these three sub-sectors, which we believe that can drive Sarawak to achieve, yeah, our aspiration to become the net food exporter. Now, talking about Sarawak as the land of plenty, we have so many plentees in Sarawak. Talking about rainfall, we have plenty of rain or water in Sarawak. Sarawak recorded between three thousand three hundred milliliters to about four thousand six hundred milliliters annually of rainfall in Sarawak. So compared to some other countries, water is not actually a problem in Sarawak, for, which is important for agricultural activities, yeah? On top of that, Sarawak has about twenty-two major river basins. So again, that will help us a lot in terms of agricultural activities. And then we have Hydro Tem Lake, all right? We have currently, we have three and one is under construction, yeah, which is Bali. So that also not only provide water, but can also become the venue for aquaculture activities. Now, the first area that I would like to share with you, which you would like to look into further after this, is the fact that Sarawak is covered with about one point six two million hectares with Walpam, all right? So this is where we are strong of because we look at the overall agriculture sector, Sarawak is indeed a net exporter of agriculture, all right? Whereby agriculture contribute around fourteen point five billion ring in Malaysia to the total GDP of Sarawak, which is again, is only about ten point four five percent of the total GDP. And the one point six two million hectares of land that, that are covered by Walpam produce around seventeen point six six million metric ton of, of fresh fruit oil, all right? And right now, we have about eighty-five Walpam oil mill as well as several others refinery plant. But what we are lacking here is the oleo, palm oil, oleochemical plant, which process the, the, the final product of Walpam, all right? So we welcome those who are interested in that, in this industry to come on board so that we can establish our own oleochemical plant to produce the final products such as, if you look at the slide, oleo biodiesel oil fats for fast-moving consumer goods, yeah? On top of that, when we produce or process or refine the Walpam product, it produce a large amount of biomass, yeah, of Walpam, which in turn can be turned into animal feed. In view of the rising cost of grain corn all over the world, that also give rise to the rising cost of animal feed production. So Sarawak is looking at Walpam or Palmsol biomass as an alternative to grain corn, soya, barley, all things like that, all right? So that is another area which is highly potential to be developed in Sarawak, okay? Because in terms of the supplies, we have more than enough, you know, for this kind of downstream industries for Walpam. Now, the other sector that has the potential is the aquaculture on top of the deep sea fishing. So Sarawak is still, Sarawak aquaculture is still underdeveloped. Currently, we only have about three thousand hectares developed with aquaculture and we are targeting up to seven thousand hectares of land-based aquacultural activities, yeah? So the fact that we have Hydro Tem Lake that also provide us with the ample opportunities to produce more fresh water fish, especially tilapia. Whereas the coastal line, along the coastal areas, because Sarawak has a very long coastline of about one thousand kilometers and this is where the land are available for shrimp activities, shrimp farming activities, all right? And of course, the other one, since Sarawak has plenty of waters, heavy rainfall, vast land, we are also looking to expand the product action area for food crop farming. So if you look at the slide, these are the promoted crop that we are looking at, durian, pineapple, coconut, banana and other high-value vegetables and fruits, all right? So with that, we have actually established a few initiatives, which include agropark, Sarawak Agrotechnology Park as well as precision farming. So we are planning to develop all this throughout Sarawak, as you can see again in the slide. For example, agropark, we are currently has approved around four thousand hectares. And this is where we need investors, especially from foreign, to become the anchor company in this park. The task of the government is to provide basic infrastructure so that, you know, when you come over, you are ready to do the planting. And to move Sarawak into an advanced technological-driven, Sarawak Technology Agropark as well as Precision Farming Park is being established as well, okay? Next one is in terms of the aquaculture development. Again, we have established a few aquaculture industrial zone. And within this AIZ, we also develop aquaculture park and by providing basic infrastructure, utilities and connectivity in here. This is to facilitate the investment in this park, all right? So with that, ladies and gentlemen, as I've said, LeRone, Sarawak is plenty. And of course, we have lots to talk about agriculture and we welcome those who are interested to participate in the industry. We are always in service and the fact that now we have Sarawak Invest, as what has been presented to our friend LeRone, that will hopefully facilitate your, to translate your interest into. that will hopefully facilitate your, to translate your interest into the actual investment in Sarawak. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr Gluma. I think Sarawak is the best place for you to invest for food industry. And we have in our region more than 600 population, a big market, huge market. And relocation of the Ibukota, or the capital city of Indonesia to Nusantara, also going to open up more demand for food. So, we have the lake, as mentioned by Dr Gluma, we have the arable land, big, huge. And also, we have the sea, so we can do both upstream and downstream processing for food. So, that is a huge potential. And last but not least, we have our fifth speaker, Mr Abang Arabi Bin Abang Narudin, Senior Vice President, Corporate Strategy, Petrom Sarabahat, our own petroleum companies, Petros. And he will be talking about the investment opportunity in the oil and gas sector. And without further ado, please welcome Mr Arabi.
Thank you for that introduction, Dr Lester. A very good morning, Assalamualaikum, Salam Sarawak maju makmur. Indeed, an honor for me to speak alongside my colleagues from Sarawak. Today, I'm gonna share with you the, you know, Sarawak Oil and Gas investment opportunities towards a low-carbon future. When I was sort of thinking of what to share with you, really, you know, the low-carbon future fits the bill. Because when I look at the objectives of this forum, one of the objectives is to advance green economy and partnerships for climate action, green technology and innovation for the preservation of the planet Earth as habitat for humans. So, I hope I will be able to share with you in not-so-great detail, at least in terms of the strategy that we have in Sarawak, towards a better future for all of us. Let me start by sharing with you the history of Sarawak Oil and Gas, yeah. Sarawak sees a lot of firsts in the oil and gas industry, you know. Certainly, Sarawak pioneered a lot of, sort of, the initiatives in the industry. The first and most famous that everybody knows is that, you know, the first oil discovery was made in Sarawak back in, back in 1910 by Shell, on top of a Canada hill, yeah. That was in 1910, and following thereon, a lot of efforts expanded offshore. And the first offshore oil well was, or platform, was started in 1968. It was the West Lutong Field in offshore of Miri. Since then, Shell did a lot of exploration and made a lot of discoveries, gas discoveries, in addition to oil. So, then you saw the first LNG plant in Malaysia, and Malaysia LNG, which was incorporated in 1978. And in 1983, saw the first LNG cargo exported out of Bintulu, yeah. And in 1993, another first for Sarawak, the first GTL plant was incorporated and commenced operations, that was by Shell. And not too long ago, in 2016, Sarawak saw the first, again, floating LNG facility. It's world-first, which was launched by Petronas. And in 2017, 24th of July, saw another history made in Sarawak with the formation of Petros, which I'm proud to be part of the organization. And moving forward, which I will be sharing with you shortly, is, you know, we want to create a new story for Sarawak, and we hope to play a big part of that, yeah. Okay, let me share with you a little bit on who we are in Petros. You know, since our inception, six years ago, we have grown into quite an integrated player in the, in the industry, engaging all exploration, development and production, and all the way to downstream of the industry. And whatever we do today, our action, our strategies guided by our purpose, which is harnessing our resources for sustainable progress of Sarawak. And out there, flash the, our amanah, our mandate. The first one is to responsibly manage and add value to Sarawak's energy resources. Secondly, is to sustainably develop the energy industry, our local talent and the economic base. And last but not least, is really to ensure greater share of resource revenue is retained in Sarawak for the benefit of Sarawakians. In the, you know, in the upstream, we have established quite a sizable footprint today, though we are only six years in the industry. You know, we are in exploration, we are in producing PSCs. And with that, in the upstream today, I'm happy to share with you that Petros is amongst the three largest producer of oil and gas in Malaysia, producing about 100,000 barrels of oil equivalent per day, yeah. And whilst in the midstream and downstream, we are the main supplier of natural gas to existing demand centers in Miri and Bintulu. In Miri, for example, we are supplying to 25,000 households and about 1,500 commercial businesses in Miri. And, and we are also, I think just one, I'm sure you've heard a lot of announcement at the recent Dewan Undangan Negri of Sarawak, that tomorrow, 1st of December, we'll see Petros supplying 100% of the subsidized LPG in the whole of Sarawak, yeah. Thank you, and, you know, with that amanah and that responsibility, we, we really want to ensure that the, the, our customers in Sarawak will have access to availability of reliable and affordable gas cylinders to all households. And there's also, I would like to take this opportunity to also assure our customers and those new customers that wanna switch to our LPG cylinders, there's no additional charge, yeah. You can just bring your different colored LPG cylinders to our dealers and get that exchange with our red Petros LPG at no additional charges, yeah. Okay, next slide, you know, I've mentioned that Sarawak Oil and Gas Industry is really in the forefront of embracing energy transition, yeah, towards, for us to, towards a sustainable and low-carbon energy future. And I'm proud to say that Petros is really in the heart of that journey, yeah. Back in 2020, 2019, 2020, Petros, together with the Sarawak State Government, spearheaded the development of the Sarawak Gas Roadmap. And really, the whole intent and purpose of the roadmap is really to increase the utilization of our indigenous gas production for, you know, to be used in Sarawak, for spurring more downstream economic activities, which will contribute directly to our PCD as 2030 strategy, contribute to greater job creations for Sarawakians, yeah. The Sarawak Gas Roadmap identified four main strategic gas hubs that will be developed. I mean, three in the north, existing Miri, Samalaju and Bintulu. And down here around us, next to us is Kuching Hub. So, that will be a real game changer for us. If you look at the various opportunities that we have laid out and at all the different hubs, there are, you can see a lot of investment and business opportunities for, for, you know, potential investors. You know, we have lineup potential petrochemical opportunities in Kuching, in Bintulu, in Samalaju as well. We are today developing, already developing as part of the Sarawak Gas Roadmap, new CCGTs, which is gas-fired power plants. In fact, as we, as I speak today, there's a parallel session in the office on a few of these projects on final investment decision, yeah. But this is equally important, I'm here to talk to you on our story. So, in Miri, for example, we are taking FID decision today to build a 400 to 500 megawatt gas-fired power plant in Miri, that is expected to come on stream in 20, I think 2026, 2026, yeah. Other investment opportunities, for Kuching, for example, there's, we're looking at an LNG FSRU, LNG regas, and all the associated facilities that come with that. We're looking at LNG virtual pipeline system to distribute LNG and natural gas throughout state of Sarawak. We know Sarawak is a, is a big state, and, you know, to distribute gas, we need LNG. VPS is one of the options identified. There are opportunities to invest in gas pipeline and related infrastructures. And last but not least is, you know, all the activities related to low-carbon solutions. I'll speak a little bit more on CCUS shortly. Alhamdulillah, you know, really, Sarawak is blessed with all the natural resources that we can harness, yeah. In terms of hydropower, we have a lot, big rivers, yeah. And I know Sarawak has got potential of about 20 gigawatt of hydropower potential. We have, we are, we have about 60% of the natural gas reserves in Malaysia. In terms of carbon storage, CCS, we have more than 65% of CCS potential in Malaysia. In terms of numbers based on the published figures, we've got about 9 billion tonnes of CO2 equivalent storage capacity. So, with all these ingredients, you wanna use that word, you know, Sarawak is poised to play a leading role in realizing and moving towards a low-carbon economy, yeah. Huge potential there for investment and opportunities, yeah. CCUS, everybody is talking about CCUS today. CCUS is, is, I would say, a must, it's a necessity for us to, you know, to, to meet our net-zero objectives by 2050, yeah. You know, we can have all the clean fuels, green energy, but ultimately, CCUS is key to help the world meeting the objectives, yeah. Our Sarawak CCUS strategy are really driven by three main objectives or strategic value drivers. The first one is CCUS enable us to commercialize the development of stranded sour gas reserves in Sarawak. Because more than, I would say, more than 50%, about 70% of our remaining gas resource are highs, with high CO2. So, CCUS is key for us to unlock those reserves. And secondly, with that, we, you know, we be able to ensure a long-term gas supply security to progress our Sarawak Gas Roadmap vision, and also in supporting the energy transition. And last but not least is really, it's about attracting investors to work with us in maturing the CCS infrastructure and building our Sarawakian capability and providing long-life jobs to Sarawakians. This is, I think, my last slide, really, this is the vision we have, the game changer that we have for Kuching. We hope by 2030, Kuching will be a home for a new CCGT plant, which will be fired by, initially by LNG, replacing the existing coal-fired power plant in Sajinkat. We hope to see a new world-scale integrated downstream gas petrochemical complex, producing blue, cleaner blue hydrogen, blue ammonia. We hope to see in Kuching by 2030, onshore sour gas facility for development of high CO2 gas field in offshore Sarawak and near West Luconia, which is, which will be enabled by offshore CCUS. And, and also, we hope to see new CO2 receiving storage hub for local carbon emitters and also for international emitters in Kuching, yeah. All this really to establish Sarawak as the CCUS heartland in the, in the region, yeah. You know, I hope, you know, with those slides, you have the appreciation on the opportunities that we have in Sarawak towards, you know, achieving, you know, all of us working towards a cleaner future. So, let me end with this slide, really on behalf of Petros, on behalf of Sarawak, we welcome you to work together. We are, you know, in our journey looking towards forming strategic partnerships with people, with investors, partners in the region, from, from other places to work with us, yeah. So, Sarawak welcomes you, invest today for a greener tomorrow. Thanks for your attention, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr Arabi, a very comprehensive presentation on our oil and gas roadmap. And we can see from the presentation, we have a very clear roadmap on how are we going to develop our oil and gas industry. And we welcome partners, investors to work hand-in-hand with our own petroleum companies, Petros, to develop, not only to build prosperity, but also enhance our technology in the, what they call that, to address climate change, yeah. So, especially through the low-carbon initiative. In the opening address of our Right Honourable Premier, he mentioned about Sarawak would like to be part of the global supply chain for halal product and services, as well as providing solution for the world issues like climate change, food securities. And the five speakers that we have this morning has elaborated enough on the initiative that Sarawak has initiated. And it opened up more opportunities for business and investment opportunity for the whole world. And now we have 20 minutes for question-answer. I would like to hand over to the floor if you have any question to our distinguished panelists. Now, is there any? Okay, sure. You can go to the mic at the center there. Please state your name and your organization.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ari, I come from Indonesia, from social enterprise named Binatswadaya Foundations. So, my questions goes to the panelists with the agriculture issues. As you know, that most agriculture As you know, that most agriculture directors are the farmers who are located in the rural area, as you have mentioned as well in your presentations. But I think the goal of the agriculture with your ambitious goal to, to become an exporters, agriculture exporters, I think we should have as well to consider the welfare of the farmers. As you know, that ASEAN now has already issued or developed the inclusive business concept. So then my question is, how is the way, the method that you want to bring the agriculture sector to, to, to reach the targets by considering the welfare of the farmers? That means considering the inequality of the, of them and then fulfilling the social protections as the right of the, all the human right to the, to the farmers. So this is my questions, that means related to the inclusive business in agriculture. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Gluma, I think that question was to you.
Thank you very much. It's a very good question and something that we are still struggling to achieve as well. Now, as I have explained around, there are few initiatives that we are currently undertaking and will undertake. Now, of course, as I've said, most of the people in the rural areas are involved with agriculture activities. Now, in the case of Sarawak, I believe in Indonesia as well is quite similar. Whereas farmers are sparsely located, they are fragmented. Usually they are characterized by low yield, low productivity, low income or low return. Now, one of the major initiatives that we are currently undertaking is to develop a clustered area in, in its Srawo State through the establishment of what we call as agro park, alright? Agro park is necessarily, necessarily is a designated area, a clustered area, where the government will provide basic infrastructure, access road, drainage irrigation, including connectivity as well. Now, the agro park will be anchored, will be plotted into plots, will be divided into plots, right? Where the plots later on will be leased out to the anchor company, which will basically operate that. And this anchor company will be the one that have, that are having the capital, the technology and most importantly is the assessed to market, the market assessed. Now, the farmers in the catchment area, in the neighboring area will be organized and to be linked with the anchor company. So that the anchor company will assist them in terms of agriculture practices as well as to off-take, to buy their produce. So in a way, those farmers that are involved with the, in the agriculture as well as within the, within the agro park area will be, you know, included in what is going to be produced in that agro park. So through that, they can have a standardized, so-called standard quality, standard price and things like that. So this is our, our plan, you know, to bring up the, to uplift the livelihood of those farmers and as well we contribute to the increase of quality of their produce as well as the, the, the price of their produce later on. So again, the park will be equipped with a collection center, processing center, which will guarantee that their produce will be able to be purchased or marketed, alright? Hope that answer your program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gluma. Indeed, one of the, our three pillars of post-COVID development strategy is inclusivity, where you want to shed the prosperity of our nation. So maybe you have another couple of question from the audience? If you have any? Perhaps I want to ask Professor Jack on digital economy. What are the some of the key digital investment opportunity that you foresee will accelerate the growth of digital economy in Sarawak? And can you illustrate this with examples?
Thank, thank you very much, Dato Ulasta. As I said earlier, the blueprint that we have developed is very heavily dependent on investment and partnership. And if you look at digital economy, it's not a local economy, it's a global economy. So basically what it means is that you do business services, you can do business services from one country for rest of the world. And the model that we are creating is that if I look at Sarawak itself, we got about 2.8 million people. So we're not doing business for 2.8 million people, but we are doing business for seven billion people, which is a global population. Now, to do that, what we need is data and the most important fuel for us. I mean, they say data is a new fuel, but I say data is a new currency. And that's how we've been, we have been talking about it. So the, some of the investment that I see that is going to accelerate digitalization in Sarawak or digital economy in Sarawak is investment in, number one, the infrastructure, like data centers. If you have data centers here, then what will happen is that the data from outside Sarawak will flow into Sarawak and that's a currency flowing in. And then once the data is here, then you can start providing services around the data, like analytical services, like security services, like cyber security and so and so forth. So that is one key area that is very important for advancing our digital economy. The other one is the, the services. You know, when I talk of services, for example, if I take an example of digital health, digital health is a very much a service-based industry which is driven by digital technologies, like telehealth service. Now, we've got 5G, which is a very high-speed, high-resolution connectivity. Now, we can start providing services to the rural areas, you know, healthcare services. Because at present, it is very difficult to have doctors and infrastructure sitting all over Sarawak. It's very expensive and globally you can't do that. So what happens is using telehealth service, we can start providing that service from a central or from urban areas to the rural areas. The third area that I see is of great importance from investment as far as digital economy is concerned, is some of the activities and technology investment, like 5G, like AI. Because these are the technology investment that is important. Only, only if we adopt them, then we'll be able to accelerate digitalization. So investment in 5G use cases, like in remote services. I mean, my colleague here mentioned about oil and gas. Most of the plants are going to be out in the ocean somewhere. So how do you control them remotely? And that's where 5G technologies and AI have become a very important area. So, and the final, I think, area that I think is very important is our, you know, human capital, investment in human, human capital. And when we look at human capital as such, at present, the responsibility is on the governments. And if you really think about it, the technology is changing so fast, then the universities and T Vets and technical colleges can't address that immediately. So that's where there's a need for the private public partnership to venture together and provide upskilling and reskill training. Thank God, in Sarawak, we have set up a syntax as one of our, our own training institutions, which focuses on upskilling and reskilling. And there, what we've got, number of industry players, technology players, like Huawei, like GE, General Electric, like Bosch and Microsoft and other, they are all partnering with us. And together, we're providing the upskilling, reskilling service for the community. So that when the graduates come, come, come out, they are job-ready. So these are some of the areas that I think are very important, Dato, that, that we have to invest, we have to attract investment. And also, we have a public partnership to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Jack. I think we have a question for the floor.
Thank you, Otto. Well, I have two things. First, it's heartening to listen that there will be priorities given to develop the local resources domestically. Specifically, I'm referring to the renewable energy that you have to attract data centers to be set up here. I think that's a great move. My question would be, how is the approach? Are you going to invite companies to bid for the renewable energy that you have? And how much investments they're going to invest into the data center and the submarine cables, for example, for connectivity? That's my first question. And related to that would be the depleted gas fields and oil gas fields, where the priority should be given to store, to capian store, locally produced carbon as opposed to importing some of those carbons from outside. Second question would be more for Dr. Gluma, in terms of agricultural food security. I did not hear you mention about poultry, which is the main source of protein for most nations and Sarawakians. And also pepper, which is one of the forte for Sarawak. I would thought that, given pepper is one of the highest yielding crop per hectare, wouldn't that be a natural progression to further promote and increase heritage in pepper? Thank you.
Thank you, Tan Sri. I don't think we need further introduction to Tan Sri. He's a very famous guy. He's from the Busa Malaysia Hut. I think we start with the first question on the depleted oil gas, Mr. Arabi.
Thank, thank you for that questions. I thought there are two parts to that question. One is about data centers, right? Okay, and the other one is with regards to depleted priorities for them. I don't know, maybe the data centers would be, I would leave that to you. But I think, let me tackle the, on the CC carbon capture. Indeed, the, in, you know, Sarawak is blessed with the lot of depleted reservoirs, both oil and gas. And we are sort of geologically well-suited for a safe storage of carbon, yeah? In terms of priorities, we do actually encourage investors actually to, to set up their shops in Sarawak. Yeah, that will sort of spur more economic activities. And then for their green agenda, for their net zero, they could have closer access to the carbon storage offshore Sarawak, yeah? Of course, for existing sort of foreign emitters, we are in discussion with many big ones. We are in discussion with, we have MOUs with the Koreans, with the Japanese to, you know, to look at opportunities of bringing their CO2 to Sarawak to be injected, yeah? So certainly the, 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 we would encourage rather than exporting their CO2 in, in Sarawak, for them to first, you know, set up their shops in, locally here, yeah? So I don't know whether that sort of answer your, your question. In terms of investment opportunities, I think up on my slide just now, for the whole of sort of both the Sarawak Gas Roadmap and the CCUS opportunities, you know, it's in a tune of more than 100 billion ringgit investment, yeah? No exact numbers, but those, that's the tune of investment that we're looking at. But I think for, for the data centers, I'll pass you, Otto.
Thank you, Tan Sri, for that question. I think it's very important. I mean, one thing is saying that we want data centers, but important thing is that can we do it? And the way I look at it is, especially if you want to set up data centers, which one thing, they're very power hungry. I mean, they look into, if you start looking at hyperscale data centers, you're looking at 200, 300 megawatts of power. And so that's one thing that a lot of countries can't do it because of the power requirement. Thank God, I mean, we have got a lot of green energy that addresses that. But the other thing is that when you look at data centers, it's not our local data that we're looking at. Because we've got, as I said, 2.8 million people, how much data we're going to generate? So it's the external data we want to flow, flowing into. And you put in a very pattern point there, is that our connectivity to outside world. And that's where the submarine cables become very important because if you see 90% of the data flow globally is through submarine cables. And thank God, we've got our own local company here, which is RX, before it was known as PPTL. Now, they have already done a major submarine link from Kuching to Singapore through Batam, which was launched last year. And the new one is hopefully will be completed by next year, which is from again Sarawak to Hong Kong. And there are already existing lines to, as you know, from, to Indonesia and Singapore also. So with all these, I think that will become an opportunity for the large-scale data centers to be put in here. And I think one of the thing that we have to keep in mind is that as soon as you start looking data centers, then the services that has to be provided to support that, especially cyber maturity, because you're holding a lot of data, then cyber security becomes a very important area. So that is another thing that we are doing, you know, and government has approved establishing a data, cyber security unit in Sarawak that is going to sort of personalize SAVAS framework, which is a federal government framework. And I'm hoping that by end of this year, next year, the unit will be set up and they will be providing guidance and support to businesses and government and citizen on cyber security, looking into the policies that is required, especially for the data and network security, looking at the infrastructure, the hardware, the software applications that can be purchased by the government and other, others so that at least we can advise them and also looking into the disaster management and so and so forth. So this is where I think we are going and, and I think it's fairly important that we, we think we have got the ecosystem to address treating large-scale data centers into, into Sarawak. Thank you.
Thank you, Prof. Jack. I think the last question is very important, eh?
Thank you very much, Dato, for asking that for security issues regards to poultry. Now, in actual fact, we, we need to be very, very careful with the poultry industry. Unlike in Semenanjung, Sarawak, we have achieved 100% SSL for egg and about 95% SSL for chicken. So in Sarawak, it is largely driven by the private sectors, for example. Now, why it is not our focus or priority subsector? Because we, we need to balance between promoting it, you know, more than that. Because the fact that now we are importing about 400 to about 600, talking about grain corn to Sarawak. So unless we have addressed the chicken feed, then we can move, you know, bigger into that one. So we have to look into the, the whole industry of poultry instead of just raising the production or increasing the production of chicken. So the, the feed needs to be addressed. But that's why we're looking at the local resources that we can, you know, develop so that once we are okay with the feed, then we can move further up into that. In fact, poultry is one of the potential areas for export, for export to generate our export earning. So that is another area. That's why we're looking at beyond Walpam, we're looking at the BSF, you know, black soldier fly, that become the important ingredient for protein for that one. Because Walpam can only provide you the fiber base. And but other sources may be also explored to take care of the feed first before we can move big into that poultry. Now, in term of peppers, actually, we have lost to Vietnam, Cambodia, Cambodia, Laos in terms of production. The fact that these countries have really take care of the production, the upstream side, where they have adopted, you know, modern farming into that. Whereas in Sarawak, we have, you know, since, ever since, we are still doing the same old thing. So what NPD is doing now is to look into how to, you know, enhance the production, the upstream activities, very adopting the new technologies, modern farming into that. So they have started to do some pilot project in the area of Betong Division and all that to, to see how pepper farming can, what do you call it? Can be enhanced using these modern techniques, you know? Like what happened in Vietnam is that they have used fatigation whereby that can reduce the manpower. So what happened with pepper industry is that because the price fluctuate quite a lot and the input keep on increasing. And then the fact that you can only harvest it once a year.
And the fact that you can only harvest it once a year, so we do not want to actually burden the farmers to early go into that. So what we're doing now is to establish some pepper belt where we can focus our effort into that. So again, it 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 is still work in progress to to look into the pepper industry. No doubt, Sarawak pepper is the is the best known in the world because of the aroma and all that. But we need to take care of the upstream activities first before we can go in big into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor. I think we can take last question, because we are running out of time.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillah rohman rohim. Saya Datuk Wan Ahmad bin Haji Abdullah, candidate from UTM Sekudan. Apa yang kita tegal tadi, everybody talking about the green and the development. So I need to stress here about the waste management system. This is the most important beside of the the development and the greens. So waste management is the most important to to discuss and take a part of development in every place. So I have a solution, I have a proposal for the waste management. So maybe I will discuss further with the with the with the person in charge according to the waste management. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that is a suggestion. I think for your mission, we do have all the, what do you call it, the mitigation on waste management, especially solid waste and also hazardous waste. So maybe, I think we are now at 10:36, we're supposed to stop at 10:30. But before we stop the session, I would like to invite Mr. Timothy, CEO of Invest Sarawak, to summarize the session by telling us what, why Sarawak is the best investment destination in this region in in the world.
Hello. Well, it's, I had a couple of points that I took down. I wouldn't say we are the best investment location currently, but we have the potential to be. I think that's where the to be part is where the investment opportunities are, right? Of course, the initial nucleus for all of this is the availability of the renewable energy that we have. But we shouldn't be stopping there. We are looking at then changing the business climate for Sarawak, ease of doing business, that is very critical in terms of, you know, being that destination. And you have then the the fact that we have got aspirations to build a very strong MSMEs. That is another point to take note. We have very much focus on the need to have human capital development. We stress that over and over again. And finally, the digital aspiration, because that that part is where the state leadership is very clear, that the digital transformation and the adoption of digital technologies, all new technologies, all innovation for that matter, is critical in order for us to get there. We have what target being 282 billion in terms of GDP, right, I believe, GNI by 2030. So the word that I've actually advised taking to this is a catapult, right? We are not talking about incremental changes. We need to change very quickly. And in that, I think these are the few things, and the and that what wraps all of this up into one is the political stability that Sarawak enjoys. So I think this is where investors will appreciate. Political stability is something which is very rare in today's geopolitical scene. So, you know, I'm hoping that with all these different ingredients for Sarawak, we will be able to then be that low destination, if it's not globally for the region, right? So does that cover most of the things that we have? Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Timothy. I think that's the end of our session for this morning under the topic of investment and business opportunity in Sarawak. Now, I hand over to our emcee, Mr. Saleh and Fuanshadiwa.
Thank you very much, Yemba Bahagia, Dato Lester Matthew. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a big round of applause for our moderator.